2018, I would like to call the meeting to order. Roll call. Mike Holden.
Here.
Tony Corpey.
Here.
Carrie Murray. Roxanne Scobstedich.
Here.
Ella Barra Jeffries.
Here.
Michelle Hebner. Here. Ed McBride. Ted Saxton.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Please stand for a couple of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. Taking a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If I can just add a couple of things just for clarification. Not a big deal, we're not going to have number four on the open forum tonight. And then if you would flip over to the second page. On, under action items, I would like to add a 4.0, which is some discussion on a school flag with possible action. So just a 4.0 there. And then also under reports, if we can add a number five, just for other committee reports for the board. Keep putting that on there, but so, other than that.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Open forum. Item one, public open forum. Okay, moving right on to item number two, presentation of December ELTS Students of the Month. Eric Early and Peyton Zahn.
I am here for your statement. Peyton Zahn is the ELTS December Female Student of the Month. Peyton is an exceptional student who has always challenged herself academically by choosing a rigorous academic schedule. She has been on both the A-on role and principals list throughout her high school career. Outside of the classroom, Peyton is very active as a member of the volleyball team member and captain of cheerleading, and is actively involved in dancing and dartsing. While not in school or participating in extracurricular activities, Peyton helps out a part-time job at the top 10 in Cheche. Peyton is planning to attend the University of Minnesota Kirkston in the fall, pursuing her career as a pediatrician. Peyton Zahn now is December Female Student of the Month.
Eric Early?
Eric Early is the ELTS December Male Student of the Month. Eric has been on the principals list and received academic excellence awards throughout his high school career. Along with maintaining good grades in the classroom, to include a 4.1 GPA during 16-17 school year, Eric has taken many college level courses and has challenged himself academically. He's a very respectful and intelligent individual who always tries to excel in all that he does. Eric is also extremely involved in school as a member of the math team, knowledgeable, FHS pep band, Minnesota Honor Society president, student council, and robotics. He is also involved athletically in football, swimming, golf, and is a member of the track team. When not in school or participating in extracurricular activities, Eric holds a part-time job at Cedar Grove Farms. Additionally, he is an active member of our community. He assists with confirmation, is a member of his church choir, that volunteers for the local food development and Gucci Shing aging options fundraiser. Next year Eric will be attending college where he plans to major in mechanical engineering. Eric Early is the ELTS December Male Student of the Month.
Okay, the January Students of the Month. Gina Orin.
Gina Orin is the ELTS January Female Student of the Month. Gina is an outstanding student who is a great role model for other students to follow. She has been on the principals list throughout her high school career. Gina has been actively involved in student council, Minnesota Honor Society, knowledgeable, the prom committee, and has received awards and recognition for her excellent work in these areas. Athletically, she is a three-sport athlete, participating in volleyball, hockey, and track and field. Outside of school, Gina is also an active member in our community. She's a certified Red Cross lifeguard, humane society volunteer, active member of her church youth group, and involved in several fundraising benefits. Gina works at Cheche Resort, CineFied, and LifeRex during the year. Gina is planning to attend North Dakota State University in the fall, majoring in both entrepreneurship and creative writing. Gina Orin, ELTS January Female Student of the Month.
And Tanner Sather?
Tanner Sather is the ELTS January Male Student of the Month. He has been on the principals list and received academic excellence awards throughout his high school career. Tanner has taken several college-level AP and honors courses and has challenged himself academically. He's a very respectful and gifted individual who always tries to succeed. Tanner is also very active outside of the classroom, participating in football, swimming, track and field, knowledgeable, math team, pep band, and Minnesota Honor Society. In addition to his school and extracurricular activities, he has volunteered in age-to-age school service and track meets and clinics. Tanner is planning to attend college to major in mathematics, computer science, or physics. Tanner Sather, ELTS January Male Student of the Month.
Back in session. Next item is recognition. Recognize the school board members for their service to the district.
February 19 through the 23rd is School Board Recognition Week in Minnesota. So I have a short statement and I have some certificates for everyone. The Minnesota School Board Association has set February 19 through the 23rd as School Board Recognition Week in Minnesota as a time to build awareness and understanding of the vital function and functions of an elected board of education plays in our society. International Falls School District is joining all public school districts across the state to celebrate School Board Recognition Week. To honor local board members for your commitment to International Falls and its children. It takes strong schools to build a strong community. It needs men and women to devote countless hours to making sure our schools are helping every child learn at a higher level. You make the tough decisions every month and spend many hours studying education issues and regulations in order to provide this kind of accountability our citizens expect. The key work of school boards is to raise student achievement by creating a vision for what the community wants the school district to be and for making student achievement a top priority. Establishing standards for what students will be expected to learn and be able to do. Ensuring progress is measured to be sure that the district goals are achieved and students are learning at expected levels. Being accountable for their decisions and actions by continually tracking and reporting results. Creating a safe, orderly climate where students can learn and teachers can teach. Forming partnerships with others in the community to solve common problems. And focusing attention on the needs for continuous improvement by questioning, refining, and revising issues related to student achievement. School board members give international Falls citizens a voice in education decision-making. Even though we made a special effort to show our appreciation in February, your contribution is your own commitment. Not to any specific order, Michelle Hebner, chairperson.
Thank you.
Ted Saxton, vice chairperson. Mike Holden, treasurer. Tony Corpey, director. Roxanne Scobstedich, director. Just for your information, the little pin, I gave one to Mr. Holden the other day. I happened to be looking for a yearbook in the vault the other day to look up some information. And there's a bay of these pins in there.
Nardi. Nardi.
I just thought, you know, I'm going to get them out and start, you know, getting them to people. So I didn't know what they're from or where they came from or how they do no good in the vault. So if anyone needs, wants some to give out to anyone or people, you know, I have a whole bay of them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. Item one, approved past meeting minutes for organizational school board meeting of January 4, 2018. Item two, approved past meeting minutes of regular school board meeting of January 18, 2018. Item three, approved current accounts payable due in the amount of $748,000.35. Item four, approved payroll in the amount of $544,321.17 for pay periods January 19, 2018 to February 16, 2018. Item five, approved in education. Title seven, parent committee approval form and the AIPAC compliance document. Item six, approved memorandum of understanding with regards to seniority between Education Minnesota 331 and the school district. Item seven, first reading of the school board policy, 620 credit for learning. Item eight, first reading of the school board policy, 903 visits to school district building and sites. Item nine, first reading of school board policy, 533 wellness. Item 10, accept engineering bid from Stevens Engineering for arena with cost not to exceed $32,400. Item 11, approved unpaid medical leave request for Brenda Leggett, parent professional. Item 12, approved unpaid medical leave of absence request for Melissa Bayou, parent professional. Item 13, approve hire of Shelby Noson as head girls volleyball coach for 2018-19 season. Item 14, approve hire of Paul Jilly as head cross-country coach for 2018-19 season. Item 15, approve hire of John Framke as head football coach for 2018-19 season. Item 16, approve James Yount as volunteer speech coach for 2017-18 season. Item 17, approve robotics club lettering criteria. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If I can make a few comments. First of all, on number six, just so you're aware, if you did look at that, in the new contract, we put in some seniority language for part-time. So for instance, if a person, and I'm just trying to make this simple, was to just say a .5 for five years, they were always on the part-time seniority list, they could continue their contract. We went forward with the concept that it would accumulate and now they would have two and a half years and keep building on it. That all worked. What happened, which we didn't, I'm going to say I didn't think of and I don't think the union did, is say someone takes unpaid time. For instance, if you all have a child and maybe you have six weeks of paid, but then you take four or five weeks unpaid. That reduces your FTE technically. That was not our intention for someone that had unpaid time to be reduced. So that's what that MO was taking care of, is, you know, like it or not, even in unpaid days, say someone got reprimanded, he can't have both ways. The intent of the language was to give. And so we changed it to board-appointed or board-hired FTE. So if I was hired as a 1.0, that's what it is real here. If it's .8, .5, those would accumulate. If someone takes a leave or had a situation where, you know, had to take care of a parent and they needed on time, it wasn't meant to reduce their standard of seniority. So it's an honest thing that came up and the union and I work together, so that's what that is. Just for reference, impol updating the policies. Number seven, if you look through them, there is impol on our weighted system. We took out the old one and put it into the new one, as was. Number eight, I had no changes in there. And number nine, wellness, we had to again update it after our review to be in compliance. The stuff in dark is pretty much what was in the old recommendations from the old committee, but we had to name a few people. No major changes. Number 10, definitely recommending Stevens Engineering for the work in the arena. There were three companies that bid it. This is the one the committee is recommending, excuse me, feel very comfortable with. There is a nice proposal here and there is a tremendous amount of expertise. They were the, I don't like to use the word cheapness, but the most economical, but a list. There's three or four pages, all of arenas from the deck to Sanford Center, Reminji, to just about the, I can't say every major arena because the other two firms had arenas as well. But we're very comfortable with what they're going to do for the piping and the slab, as well as engineering, some recommendations for the mechanical, as far as compressors and stuff go. And the only other thing I just want to mention here, on the robotics club, they'd approached us to get lettering criteria in place. We asked them to come forth with some lettering criteria. I'm not sure if anyone could have lettered. They went above and beyond. So we borrowed some fairly simplistic language from a couple of other schools that have it. It can be changed at any time. I sent it to their advisors, there's three of them, to let them know we're moving forward. So at least the group is actively doing it. Now, if they want to be a little more stringent or more technical, we can update it. But we have to date something so that this group that is working now can solve. That's, I think, all my comments right now.
I'd like to ask more or less a question on policy 903. It's just a quick one, that's why I bring it up beforehand. Section five, paragraph C, it starts off with an individual, comma, post-secondary enrollment option student, comma, or group who enters school property without complying with their procedures. It basically says we can, the principal can hold them or whatever. Does post-secondary enrollment option students need to be in there? Because, I mean, it sounds hostile to post-secondary enrollment option students when they are an individual and they are or part of a group. So it seems weird to specify them.
The only thing I can specify is that is part of the changes. The reason being is that if you recall, and you may or may not, last year it made headlines where a school in southern Minnesota was not allowing PSEO students to come in, access computers or access wifi if they needed. They were full-time PSEO kits and it's that they're not taking any classes here, we're not letting in. That's where that is, I think, coming from, is that they're trying to spell out that you have to allow them to come in, like if they want to use our library, computer lab, but they do have to follow our, you know, rules, you know, part where students are part. We do have some that come to attend lunch. We schedule, you know, it's just not come hang around for an hour and a half. You know, you let us know what lunch you want, what works in your schedule. That way we know who's in the building and we know when you should leave the building. So that's my, I'm not saying they couldn't come out, but they have added PSEO specifically in.
It just seemed redundant to me and almost targeting because, I mean, however many individuals come into the building, you could specify all of them. You know, you could say basketball coaches or whatever. So I don't know, it just seemed weird to just put that in there. But it's just the first reading.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Action items. Item one, resolution acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, being resolved, the school board of your National Falls Public Schools ISC 361 accepts or depreciation of the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. And prom student activity group donations received. Dakota State, two t-shirts. Gus Davis t-shirt. Do we need to put some sort of value with those or not, or is it just?
No.
Okay. Alright. More, spanner flag, Moorhead t-shirt, St. Benedict's t-shirt, Oxburgh t-shirt, Southwest t-shirt, Yovemberman Tato t-shirt. Andy SCS t-shirt, water bottle, pen, card, holder, paper holder, and bag tag. Hibbing Community College, Decal lanyard and t-shirt. Winona State t-shirt, UMD t-shirt. Concordia, pen, banner, and t-shirt. University of Missouri, Decal magnafilm and sweatshirt near Rissu Northwestern, four t-shirts. District donations received. PCA mail for Hall of Fame, $1,000. Coca-Cola bottling for Hall of Fame, $250. Northern Reliable Insurance for Hall of Fame, $250. True Star Federal Credit Union for Hall of Fame, $1,000. Dean Glaze for Hall of Fame, $500. Student Super One for Hall of Fame, $500. American to FHS Robotics Team, $50. Hometown Hobby and Crafts, FHS Robotics Team, $500. Mr. P Foundation for FES Scaling Wall Donation, $8,000. Coca-Cola bottling for Arena Scoreboard Sponsorship, $1,000. Box tops for education for FHS student planners, $168.90. Box tops for education for FES students, $846.30. Girls hockey boosters for huddle software, $200. Ed Minnesota Local 331 for parent appreciation lunch at FES, $100. Boys hockey boosters for transportation to Warroad Tournament, $1,143.32. PCA mail, Grand Astral Falls donated two pallets of X9 paper, $2,800.
May I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering where this forum, this particular piece of paper is going only because I see about three typos in there. I think it's the school district, but maybe we should be careful.
This one?
There's three, yeah.
It's part of a board agenda and I guess I can catch, I'm not saying there is or isn't, but.
Right. Just if it's not filed anywhere, I guess I don't care.
It's filed in the records, but I'm not going to say there aren't mistakes. I mean, no different. We try and do our best for check or whatever.
Yep. Okay. No biggie.
Well, it is and it isn't. I understand what you're saying, but on the flip side, we'll spend three times more of the time, you know.
It's funny, spell check doesn't catch some words.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve, to accept the gifts and donations?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, roll. Mike Holden?
Yes.
Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Carrie Murray? Roxanne Scobstedich?
Yes.
Michelle Hebner, yes. Ed McBride, absent. Ted Saxton?
Yes.
All voted in favor and none voted against, whereas the resolution was decided after.
Can we then have some discussion on, you know, next item before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next item is the calendars. So if we look down, there's two calendars. I had some meeting with John and he shared with Ole 331. There is language for meeting confirmed, so we take, he did, you can correct me if I'm wrong, did survey their members to get a little info, you know, what they'd like to see, what they would not like to see. If you recall, the exchange days for conferences, which we put on Monday and Friday this year of first week in November, whether you want to call it here or whatever, but we tried to have this go around. Their take, or I should say the majority of people would like it to be put back together. Not that it didn't work, I thought it worked just fine. I couldn't find anything, you know, attendance-wise where it was better or worse. I didn't spend a whole lot of time. We had kids, both years we've had kids, they're not around. So anyway, both options there, you'll see, have that put back to the Thursday, Friday. And I think some of the comments they heard were, you know, there's people that would like to maybe move to the cities or do something and have four days is better than having two, three, eight weekends. So again, this is their input. You need to either accept one of the two or modify how you'd like. The option B, there were also, right around 50%, 49% or something, that were not. 49% were in favor of a spring break, which means 51% were not. So it was pretty split. So should we put that forward or not? We came up with an option that has a three-day in March. I opened to it as a spring break. Obviously, it pushes graduation and that stuff back. We didn't put a whole full week in there. You know, that's what some of them wanted. Tried to maybe come up with a combination and would leave some. You can guarantee whichever one you pick, some will be happy, some will not. Or we can move things around out there. Just being honest with you, we picked kind of where things were in there. Do you want to speak at all, John? I mean, I don't know if I.
No, that's how it came down to. It's, the survey really didn't give us great direction of which way to go. It was 50.1, 49.9, I don't know. We called them, so I'd say have to step on it. So it's like, well, so we can compromise, we'll fix a couple of days and see if it works or not.
But it does, my only, and again, my only concern, I mean, whether it is a concern or not, I'm working all year, so to speak. So school getting out in June, you know, is not a big issue for me, but it does push it back a few days. The other question that would come up is where do you put graduation? And I'm just throwing that out as a thought because typically seniors are done, you know, the week prior. So I don't know if they would go all the way through, like the 31st, for instance, and then just have, you know, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off and graduate on Sunday, the 9th. Or if they would actually be done the week prior and be out more than a week and graduate prior to school being actually out.
Can we remove a couple of days in April? In lieu of the couple of days in March?
That's Good Friday and Easter Monday, you know, whether, I mean, you don't have to have. I'd have to look at the contract. I think Good Friday, I think is, I don't have my contract, but I think Good Friday is listed in.
I think it's one of the holidays, isn't it?
Yeah. Because Monday could come off of there.
What about President's Day?
President's Day has to be.
Has to be on there.
And if you notice, the January 21st is a workshop day. Students will be out, which will, at least this go around, you know, accommodate some. The only problem we had with, just say you moved it back one day, or even, students aren't going to come back for one day. You know, or if we had finals Thursday and Friday or something like that. It's up to you guys, which, and I'm. I have my opinion, but that's the same as, you know, everyone. And it's not, I struggle a little bit because this is, I don't have a good stance on, you know, as a A better or a B. I guess you as parents and community members, you know, this or some other option. You know, I mean, both of them have the required days for teachers, you know, staff, and students.
Well, I would think the seniors want to get out.
Yeah, I think I'm a little more in favor of the option A.
When does the Chinese start for, like, if they sign up for the Marines or the, I mean, last year I know Little Fork cut it really close and kids had to leave. It was like the next day and that was later, wasn't it?
I have no idea.
I don't. I just know the seniors are going to want to get out.
I don't want to have them.
No.
We had to have them.
I was just.
You don't want to have them be done.
I like school. Don't get me wrong, I love.
What am I missing here about the spring? What am I missing about spring break? It's on both of them, isn't it?
No, because you see on option B, there's about three, March 13th.
Oh, those, March. Okay, I was looking in April. I guess I don't know when spring is.
Yeah, the 19th and 22nd coincide with, like I say, Good Friday.
And that's the same as we have this year for March, right? These same days.
Correct. Correct word for idea for him this year, but this year's is very similar to option A. It's about to scale back, if you will.
I'm in favor of option A.
I think I am too.
I'm in favor of A.
Well, someone's got to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Make an emotion?
I'll second that then.
So Mike is making a motion? So Mike is making a motion to accept option A. Ted seconded it. Okay, I have a motion on the table to accept calendar option A. With the last day of school, May 31st, 2018, graduation day, June 2nd, 2019. Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item three, approve a contract for Learning Sciences International for Professional Development for the 2018-19 fiscal year to be funded with staff development aid.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
If I can just do things, I did, there is information you're asking here, as well as I provided to you individually, some information to look at, some websites to look at. And Missy can speak to some of this as well. We've been looking for someone to help, help lead the district, what would I say, educationally, take us to the next step. There is, there is a lot of great stuff going on every day here. And we've been working on our curriculum, will be aligned as of April completed, if they technically supposed to be doing now, we're looking at what is the next step. It's all being covered, makes sense now, the next thing is get some, you know, guidance, if you will. We all do things kind of how we're done, so to speak. Not saying that's good, but there are new ideas out there. We feel that we need to link with someone upfront, it's not very cheap, you know, it, it's costing some money, they come in, there's two in-service days in which they would work with, completely with the staff. And there's a pile of other days where they come in and do these walkthroughs, work with small groups, do it, you know, full groups. I'll be honest, I, I was only to Masabi East, I seen a group in Tim where to Masabi East. Did you go to Deer River?
Oh, you didn't.
Okay, they were there several times. It's pretty neat what's going on. Again, I'll be honest, the elementary, I think is further ahead of that school with this project than high school. High school's coming along, but it's a little more challenging, because they don't all teach everything, so to speak. But it's not, the plan as far as the payment piece is right now, and you'll see this in a bunch of work session or at least hear about it, we've been, in the last couple of years, taking 70, 74,000 out of PDT to cover in services. My plan would be to take that long money to cover this, that's a little bit more, so it's not a huge impact, but it is gonna affect the money fund, which we get all 140,000, 135,000, 140,000, so...
I have a question. I have a question, I was just wondering, is, I think this is absolutely wonderful, I think that there's been a lot of talk about it in the past. I think teachers have done some of that kind of stuff with group teaching and things. But I'm wondering, once they have this training, would then there be some sort of a decision that said every classroom should do this kind of a thing for so many, you know, for part of each day? Or are they gonna say, pick, choose it if you want as a teaching tool?
So I think what we saw in Masabi East, we saw a lot of really great things there. One of the things we saw a lot of that was very evident, especially in the elementary side, was the conditions for learning. And so that started with some staff development, they have their staff development, and then they go back to their classrooms and through their PLCs, they discuss that, how they're gonna implement that in classroom. But it's really like, these are the non-negotiables that you're gonna be doing, like, for example, in elementary classrooms and high schools starting them too. In every single classroom, they have a poster that, that has the student standard that they're learning for that day, and then it talks about how the students will know, how they under, know that, how they demonstrate that they know that standard, and then it talks about like, why they're doing that. So it helps to move the accountability. And we've started that a little bit in, in our school this year, but it's not like consistent, like, there, when you walk in, you know exactly where to look for the standards, it's right there. The kids are becoming accountable, they're talking about it. Like, the first time we went there, we went into a first grade classroom, and it was probably like the second month of school, and I'm not even kidding, like, these little first graders were engaged in rich academic conversation, like, there was not kids that were off task. They were really directing each other, and it was so cool to watch that teacher, then that teacher could walk around and monitor for them for all, rather than just small groups. So it was really, it really made for a great feeling. And then some of the other pieces that they talk a lot about, it's just like, it's really making your teaching more intentional and really bringing that higher level order of thinking, and really helping us as principals to become better instructional coaches, and our teachers to become better instructional leaders, because we don't really learn a lot about that. But when we, when we went through one coaching session, it was under a fifth grade math class, and there was a standard on the board, but the activity that the kids were doing did not match the level of complexity that was up on the, on the thing. And I did not pick that out right away, and I probably wouldn't have, because I talked about a lot of like surface level things with my teacher, like classroom management, things that are real evident right away. But this was much, he had been doing a really low level task, and the standard was very high level. And so the lady, the trainer, she went over and talked him about that, and he talked about how he was having them do that low level task, so he could understand what he needs to, to scaffold their instruction, so that he can get to that higher level. Because all of them can get there, but if you start out at a higher level without those scaffolds, naturally, a lot of those kids are not going to succeed. So if he could do that low level task, he could see where he needed to scaffold each kid and bring that to that higher order. And I just thought, wow, like, what a great aha moment. And then so when we came back, it just, the conversations they had about the rigor in the classrooms and the conversations the kids had together was really incredible, and it just seemed so genuine and authentic. I mean, we're really excited, the teachers that went frequently for the elementary side were Kim McDonald, Martha Nemec, and Heather Evil and Selwyn. Every time we left, we just, you know, were so excited, I remember coming back to tell Kevin, and I was so excited, he's like, Tim, did you see the same thing? Because I was so excited, he's like, really? But it was really cool to see all that, and they spent a lot of time on their conditions for learning. And like, that coaching just really helps if you keep coming back to it.
And so you would, once the training, and that sounds really good, that was a real clear explanation and stuff. So you would then, once the training was implemented, you would not say, for a teacher to say, oh, I'm not gonna use that type of technique?
No, I think that in order for it to work, you all need to, to do it. Where it's not going to work, you'll have some teachers that aren't doing it. And even actually, the principal at Masabi East always said, like, we're trying to create the same opportunities in each classroom, so every kid has the same rich educational experience. Not to say we're gonna hamper teachers' teaching style, every teacher has their own style, but we want them all to have that same rich experience. And if we're saying like, well, if you feel like doing this, that's not best practice. I mean, I think we need to come to the table and say, we're all posting our learning standards, this is how we're gonna do it, but we're going to teach that, how to do it, so it's not so scary. I mean, it might take us a while to get there, but I, I don't think you can do that.
And it's not every teacher teaching the same way. There, there are teachers, there's actually, there's teachers, you know, doing a group one, there's, teachers are still teaching, you know, similar, but it's making sure that they are getting to where they need to get, at the level they need to get, and the students are truly getting it and getting, you know, engaged, because that was one of the questions that I threw out. I mean, there's just certain things in elementary is different than high school. I mean, to have a, use a KELP class and have no lecture, it's gonna be a tough goal. I mean, there are different ways to, you know, if that's not the case, if this, if this still works, it can be applied, maybe a little more challenging. And, and like I said before, the elementary, I think it's very typical, everyone's going through the training. Each school may move at a little different pace, if that makes sense. And I mentioned it, I'm in favor of everyone going through the training. And we are gonna work as a administrative staff and as, you know, a district with your layouts and stuff, to take baby steps, move through this and, and give it a whirl. And we will work with all staff, again, for a master, way to teach and that, that we want. They're great teachers, and great things going on, but let's see if we can, you know, take another step forward. And that's, that's what we're asking for.
Well, I think it sounds like a great opportunity to kind of move a staff center and forward. You know, we keep trying and getting those higher test scores and...
The only other piece that needs to be kind of thought about is, there's two full in-service days. And then they come and do a pile of different trainings, walkthrough, admin, as well as small group staff. With the two in-service days, they can't be back to back. They'll want it and then want us working and using and struggling and practicing. Going back to the calendar, you notice that like October 5th date, I'm just gonna say that date they have to be, we want one early in the year. Two before school, the one, we go to Virginia, and I'm, I'm not interested in getting rid of that day. And it's, John mentioned, teachers, they like, yeah, they like, they need to be with, you know, other third grade teachers, other shop teachers, math teachers, you know, it's done well. The first one, you know, we, we need that, get, you know, A, get in here, get a bloodborne pathogen, still, get rid of the welcome back by myself, but, you know, and you, but there's just some in-house handholding into rooms, we have meet the teacher night. So theoretically, we, and I, and I don't think we can set it tonight. We're gonna have to talk with the company, see when they can come, you know, that October 5th. I just wanna preface, as, as this calendar goes out, that October 50th might have to move somewhere. And we're probably gonna have to look at adding one more, you know, when we need it. I don't know if that's gonna be two months down the road, three months down the road, you know, it would not be another, I think it would exchange the teachers to be here more than students would.
What about the January 21st in-service day?
That, that's an opportunity, it's a possibility.
If they're available.
You know, and, yeah, so I just, let us talk with them, we'll get more info, we'll bring it back to you for your, your approval, if this is approved, let's put it that way. I just wanted to throw that out there.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Item 4.0, school flag.
If you recall, after the last all, all class reunion year before last summer, took all year, we ended up getting a donation from funds left over for a variety of projects where whittling away, if you will, at those. There's some stickers for the door coming in rooms, the weight room recently got, I think it's all purple, maybe it's purple gold, new padding put on. There's a variety of projects that they have supplemented or gave us. Speaker says we need one of them, there was money for, to help with the, get marching band going in the summer. And one of the things that they requested was for the school to get, or come up with a school flag, something for, SD361. So I did a little searching, and I, I told people, I asked some people for some help, you know, if we can give schools to, our students to design. Him and Hot, eventually it came back, why don't you give someone professionally to give some recommendations? He can always do weekend. And so what we did, and I'm just gonna throw these out, and, and we've had a variety of people. This was the first run through, okay, and I had to pass this down. And what ended up happening, if you want, just glance at it, there's a revision here that's coming, is from the, several members of the all-class reunion committee gave their opinion, several teachers, a few students were asked, and a few other staff. And we kind of took, you know, what the majority felt with, gave it back to the group that designed it for some alternative, some alternative or some possible other recommendations. I'll just be honest with you, a couple of the top ones, they're different ones liked. Some felt things were too busy in certain places. The one that ended up coming to the forefront is down on the bottom. And most, I'll be honest, I just wanna take it around, a few of the kids liked the, I'm gonna say wilder designs. Majority of the graduates from here liked something with the bronco on it, liked something with the classroom on it. And so what we did is we took, took that, that one and had them do a couple other options. One of them being, they wanted, and I don't know how good it printed, this can be more gold, there was a little more yellow on that sheet. They also wanted, you know, came up numerous times, we need a bronco on that one. So that was this revision, then someone asked, what about, you know, flip-flopping kind of the color design? I will send this down, I, I maybe should have printed a few more colors. I can tell you what, I passed this round too. There is a preference of the two, but I think, two things we need. One, are you okay with, you know, getting these school, this is gonna be, they've given us money and it has to be done in a correct way to get a flag pole put out properly. I don't know exactly how far it has to be away from the, you know, US flag, and it has to be lower, but it will be done properly. The other thing we wanna do is get multiple made, because it's not gonna last, you know what I'm saying? They'll last for a while. We'll see what goes, we probably, I just thought, I gave, we probably should have one, you know, over billions, to be honest with you. They, they had said, put one out at Falls High School, but, you know...
Everything else would be, everything else is...
Yeah, I think it's good to have it at Falls High School, yeah.
So I think whether the, the money covers both or not, but what is, do you want my, do you want what people have said on those two? Most have come back with the yellow, okay, or the gold, I should say, gold, don't say yellow. I'll be honest, my personal opinion, I like purple, but more of the people that I talked to liked the gold, and thought waterfall and the emblem would be better on the gold one.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, I think from a visually perspective, I think visually, it's easier to see the purple print on a yellow background than it is visually to see the white print on a dark background.
Yeah.
If you're okay with it, we would need, like I said, I just think we should have a motion of some sort to adopt, you know, unless you have some modification, I don't know that, like I say, we're gonna work and make sure we get a big enough and a, you know, correct size. Very possible we'll get one put up, you know, even inside. Then you can see just, whether it was in here or in the gym or somewhere else, you know?
I'll make that motion.
Which one?
The gold one.
Did they do a version where they made the horse all purple like it is on the skin? And just the mane and the tail are gold?
On the gold one?
Yeah.
No, they didn't, for the, I didn't even...
So it might be interesting to see what that would look like with the horse purple. At the gold one.
Yeah, but then you'd have gold on it.
You'd have running into gold, I mean, it would run up, run into the gold background, the main horse.
Unless you have the white line, it's separate.
The man would run into the...
Yeah.
This is gonna stand out.
Yes.
You'll be able to see that really good.
Seems like a lot, I did not, it seems like a lot for a flag, not the concert, it's all at the time, yeah. But that's fine. Doesn't mean... Doesn't mean it's bad.
Might mean it's...
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the flag? Roxanne seconded. No, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Administrative reports. The CT.
Our enrollment at 5:45, we have had some kids come and go, but our number stayed the same, 5:45 this month. We had our parent mentor conferences our last month of the year on February 15th. We just have weekly in committee administration on February 15th also. We just finished re-living sets, and we raised over $4,000 for that. And then Mrs. Nelson is wrapping up jumper over her this week, and you know, the kids have been really excited about that and have been earning lots of money for that. Our Rockwall is scheduled to be installed on February 22nd, so we're excited about that. And Rick Rasher is a motivational speaker, he's coming on February 23rd to talk to both schools, and then male and female athletes. And then we have early childhood screening on March 2nd.
What date did you say the Rockwall was on?
Uh, Friday, February 22nd.
No, Thursday, Thursday.
February 22nd.
It's going in on Thursday, we may need a little bit of time Friday to finish, may not. Just so the board is aware, I sent Mr. Pete Foundation, Kim from Mr. Pete Foundation, an email today, saying we're gonna have to look at doing an unveiling. And Shelby and I have talked a little bit about, you know, we may lose it here before, you know, but we will keep the board informed. We also talked about possibly doing something where, you know, for a couple hours, especially if my kids bring their parents in, you know, at the same time, just a thought.
Missy, do you know how many preschool registrations you have for...
I have been pulled.
I'll see if you want to read. I'll show you if you want.
And Mr. Peterson's report, their numbers are 626. They're down four from the last year. And two, achieved two from last month. And then they had their last parent teacher conferences, or they have them on Wednesday, February 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Falls High School for all students in grades 6 through 12. Winter sports weeks have already begun tournament play with the last winter sport, including the fourth week of March. We had a program for all female students in grade 10 through 12 on Friday, February 16th at the Falls High School cafeteria. The presentation centered on women in the engineering field and other STEM careers. The purpose of the presentation was to motivate female students to enter the engineering field. This is the second year that we've offered this presentation to female students. And they also have Rick Rasher that come in to speak. He's presenting to the higher high school Friday morning and to the entire elementary school Friday afternoon. And he'll present to all male athletes on Thursday night and all female athletes on Friday night.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Perfect. Several things. Part of your board packet there is a piece on bio-mental scanner. And I just wanted to board where we're looking into this option for food service. Some of you are aware after our food review, having six or 12 in our building is limiting some of the things that we can serve. And a prime example is the Powerade. A kid in it, older kids could have, like, kids 9th and 12 could have a Powerade. But with 6, 7, and 8 being around, it causes an issue. Because they just can't, they can't have that quantity. And they don't make a smaller size, a smaller size. So we're looking at some things. A, it would be probably very user-friendly for both buildings. Elementary, they don't remember number. You know, eventually they do, they pretty much type them in. But we're looking at options that if, by registering, would, you know, would a signal come up that you're being great? Because we'd like to have some of that stuff. We're looking at a vending machine that possibly the same type of deal would, you know, it would know your age and program so that we could have some variation. You know, the goal isn't to make, you know, make it, how do I say this appropriately? Very little available that's want. That isn't the goal, but we do have to follow the regulations. The reason I put it out is I want you aware, this, and the company has been good to give us information. It's not a fingerprint, okay? It does not keep, you know, a complete fingerprint. You read through its base, you know, they verify. It takes some images and usually you know of like index figures or it just became something, you know, you got a blue on one or something. But it's doing a, relating certain pieces and then relating it to a number. Every student has a, you know, a number in their system. So they're very unknown. Hopefully, we're looking at using them next year. We're still working on it. And it may, who knows, go a part. We might end up having them for checking out library books. You know, it could all interface there. Do you remember what they were, 300 to 500?
No, it's, they're, it's like 3200 or something.
Yeah, for 6 up to 500, you know, roughly. I mean, it's not break the bank type deal. Let alone, it probably would speed things up possibly. And we're looking at, just so you're aware, some possible scanners, because that would be another option with some of the items that we're registering. You know, certain kids could have. We're working on it, but I put that in there because I want you aware. If someone says, hey, I hear they're, you know, and my kid's fingerprint keeping it on file. Not in case there are devices that use a complete, you know, thumbprint or fingerprint. This isn't it.
What would be the difference between Powerade and Gatorade?
Well, Gatorade is the same thing. It's just a different brand. No, it's not. It can be.
Technology ounces or twelve ounces.
That the.
Distributor makes a smaller one.
Yeah.
They do.
Because that's what I buy from them. I think it's the, it also has to be calories and sugar.
Yeah. Like I said, the distributors have been in, I mean, and one being, and just use Coca-Cola as an example. Because, you know, they want to work with us, and they can't find anything that would meet the 628. You know, they're working on it still, saying, you know, pure water or pure juice are both the only two options other than milk. And I'd say that's all bad, but we're working on some other options, see if we can at least work for whoever wants. The next thing, I just want to bring a couple other things up. I want you aware, and I'm looking through my letter. Your business manager has applied for a new position. With, it's an advisory council. It's an advisory council. She's not leaving. She was accepted by the Department of Education to an advisory committee on financial management, accounting, and reporting. And they mean quarterly. I think you put in, did you put in ones before?
No.
No, 5. Okay. So anyway, I wanted you aware, I think it's quarterly meetings. And with the hope of bringing A, some new ideas to them, but also bringing some new ideas back and into a variety of people. But a lot of them are member countries, like yourself, so to speak. So I gave her the go-ahead to apply, but I wanted you aware, just in case you hear something. So congratulations. School force. I took about two hours, two and a half hours on Friday. I was invited a while ago to go down to our school force with a forester from the state, our little forec office. Obviously, aware was there. We've done some things like let us snow go travel, you know, and he's been a few years back, but never been down there. So we went down and didn't walk through the whole thing, but did snow shoe around for an hour or so. I was actually very impressed. It's going to say nicer than I guess I thought it probably would be. There's a very nice road that goes through, most likely very hot. Actually, Crumly said, if you go down there, there's no snow. It has had some cutting probably 15 years ago. There's about 20 acres that give, give or take probably in around five years, four years, heat belt, without going and doing a whole closer analysis, would be probably ready to be cut. And the only reason I throw it out there is I think we, we should start thinking about it. Because when the time comes, they want it to be an educational experience, so to speak. And like you say, there's a nice road course that they're logging. It's very easy access. They think he thought whenever we decide to go, we should try and get some groups down there. Obviously, probably have to look at renting some facilities, all that else. But the other thing we should think about is long-term, and we can take a trip down sometime. And, you know, maybe now there's, you know, for the snow, I think. But, you know, what is nice? You should all see it. There's a lot of opportunity. There's some high ground. There's a, I just, a few pictures. There's two beaver ponds right there that, you know, would cause us all. But we should think about what we'd like, you know, would you like to have a capability eventually? Or, you know, as a, and I said, I would do some investigation. I don't know if you could go for, all that else is, you know, if there's any liability, you know, under the whole thing. Because then classes could go down and actually lose it at different points. But anyway, it's a cool place. Anyone ever wants, like, I know it's open for babbles, obviously.
Is it at, or, yeah, or?
It's okay. You go to Ray Northwood, the, the, right by the woodland.
Okay.
Ain't a left. And I guess that's about three quarters of a mile on the left-hand side. There's a yellow forest gate. It's open right now because they were actually hauling through there. But it's not blocked, right? You probably could drive back in then. Maybe three quarters mile, maybe less than, you don't know. Not very far down until before you go up the first hill.
I'd like to see that.
And there's, there's a 40 on the front. And then I guess, my, my thought is to go into the west then there. Maybe it's northwest. There's, there's 160 behind that.
So you got 200.
There's 200 acres. Like I say, some of it is that, a lot of it has kind of ash, soil, swamp or whatever. But then there's a lot more that we didn't get back to the dirt back, the best, more wooded area. But yeah, some of them, I'm very interested. It looked like the, over here, this nice height in the spring and fall. You know, on its own, you know, a lot of bumping. But anyway, just wanted you aware, so we're going to keep some ideas going there. I did get, if anyone's interested, the Northland Foundation, which again, I don't know a whole lot about, but we're on their mail list. We did get a minor grant from them for a science club, a science activity, mad science. I forget the name of it, but Mr. Hemsted is doing. They're looking for trustees. And I have no idea what the requirements are. I have a piece paper, if anyone's interested. They're looking for some trustee or a board member from this area. So if anyone would like to investigate it, I don't know if I'll get in or not. So I have that. If someone's interested, let me know. Missy talked about finding all going in. I think that's all I have.
Especially that mad science is a huge hit. We had over 60 kids send up. We had actually like do positive, maybe we some people were affected in this different session, so.
Yeah, I was curious the information, if anyone is interested. They apply on Survey Monkey, and it's like most things, they won't get a ton of applicants, or, you know. They're, they're, just like these trends, they have them kind of locking up in their area. They're looking for more, you know, and so the same thing, certainly not, I don't know what, I don't know. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Item four, Ella.
Um, we did a book drive at our last home hockey game, and all the donations are going to multiple charities. We are doing masquerade ball for grades nine through 12 on February 23rd, so this Friday. For Dr. Seuss Day, we are having four of our members from the student council going to the Falls Elementary School to read to the kids. For winter sports week, our theme that we came up with is summer vacation. The Northeastern Division meeting will be on March 13th. I believe we have nine of our members going. And quite a few of them are running for an exec board position. State will be on April 7th through the 9th with 11 of our members going. Thank you.
Item five, other committee reports.
Well, I'd like to start talking about what goes on at the rec board, since it's part of the joint powers agreement. Just give a quick summary with the committee, since I've been appointed to that board now. And so, just quickly, we reviewed section four and five of the joint powers agreement. And one thing that affects the school board is we changed when Bill Mason has to give his comprehensive overview to us. And so everything got pushed back a month, so we had time to prepare it because there was some other stuff that was going on that made that harder for him to do. And Tony, Paul, and Joe Schwartz were reappointed to that large position. And then the board instructed Bill Mason to write a letter to the rec hockey board about concerns that have been brought up regarding behavior of kids and lack of supervision and discipline by adults involved with the program. And then also, they're going to implement a non-resident fee for any non-school district, for people who don't live in the school district. So people from Fort Francis that come over. I don't remember what the fee is. It wasn't a lot. And it was same, it was the same as what Fort Francis charges on us. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right. Last item, adjournment. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I have a motion second. Any further discussion? Uh, I'll approve.
All right.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. It was like six and seven.